F, 7F. Which is the Southgate Meadows issue. If I could get a mover to put the item on the floor. Moved by Council Desai, seconded by Council Mackey.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you for allowing us, allowing me to bump this up. As the Warden indicated, we have Corey Chisholm from MHBC Planning, who is the applicant's planning consultant for this development in the audience. And he's here to, if there's any specific types of questions that I'm not able to answer, he's here, of course, to be able to answer those if council has any or community hall has any. So the purpose of this report is to consider a proposed plan of subdivision in the township of Southgate, known as Southgate Meadows, to create 163 residential units. Subject lands are up on the screen. They're approximately 14.6 hectares in size. They currently contain a horse track, fields that are currently used for agricultural purposes, a house and agricultural buildings. North of the subject lands is the county CP rail trail, as well as a residential subdivision that is currently being developed. South of subject lands is Glenelg Street and the Gray County Transportation Works yard. And then west of subject lands are additional lands owned by the applicant that are currently vacant and contain a woodlot. Further west are some residential dwellings to the west as well. The proposed development also required a local official plan amendment and a zoning bylaw amendment from the township of Southgate. The lots would gain access off of new public roads that would connect to Glenelg Street. So that's the street that's running, if it was north, so it'd be northwest to southwest, southwest to northeast direction. Servicing to the proposed lots would be via municipal water and sewer services, which would be allocated by the township at the time of final approval for each phase. A holding provision has been applied through the zoning amendment, and the holding would only be lifted once servicing capacity has been allocated to each phase going forward. Stick with the keys. The initial plan submitted proposed to create a total of 153 residential units. And partway through the process, revisions were made to the plan, which were required to address some of the comments we received. This resulted in a change in the design of the plan. The latest revised plan now proposes a total of 163 residential units, consisting of 130 singles and 33 townhouse units. Two blocks have also been identified for future lots, should the lands to the north be developed at some point in the future, and once access to those blocks and walkway are provided. So those blocks are located up in the northwest and northeast corner of that subdivision on the screen there. Several other blocks have also been identified in the proposed plan, including a park block, open space block, stormwater management block, future road connections, as well as walkway and trail blocks. Access, as I mentioned, will be provided by construction of two new public roads that would connect to Glenelg Street. And as you can see, there's two access points that are being proposed access off of Glenelg. The subject lands are designated as primary settlement area in the county official plan, and parts of the subject lands are designated as hazard lands, and that's the west portion, the left-hand portion of the screen. The subject lands were designated as neighborhood area, hazard lands, and industrial in the Southgate official plan. And official plan amendment number 23 has been adopted and approved, which re-designated the industrial designation to neighborhood area to permit the proposed plan of subdivision. Information was provided by the applicant and the township to address the provincial policy statement requirements, county OP and township policy requirements, which demonstrated that there was still inadequate supply of vacant industrial lands to accommodate the future employment growth. And therefore justification was provided to re-designate those industrial lands. Public meeting was held earlier this year, in June 26 of this year. A number of comments were received. Those are identified in the report in the table. Just to touch on some of those. So there were some initial questions about some of the studies, impacts on wells, ensuring no impacts on water sewer facilities. The township engineering consultant and Grand River Conservation Authority have reviewed those technical studies and have no concerns. We've also included some conditions of draft approval, which require detailed design for some of those elements. There were questions, concerns about stormwater and drainage. And there was a preliminary stormwater management plan that has been designed to ensure that the stormwater and drainage would be dealt with on-site. Both the township and Grand River Conservation Authority have reviewed those, and they have no concerns. And they've recommended some conditions of draft approval, which we've incorporated. There was questions regarding mitigation measures from proposed homes along the rail trail. And this is particularly regarding noise of ATVs and snowmobiles. And we've included some draft plan conditions requiring the owner to construct a fence adjacent to the CP rail trail, as well as, and preserve a plant or a tree buffer along the backs of those lots. Condition has also been included requiring that all agreements of purchase and sale let people know that there is a CP rail trail that's adjacent to those lots, and that it's from time to time, there may be some noise from users of that trail. There was also concerns about ecological changes, environmental impacts, and what green space is being protected. An environmental impact study was done for the proposed development. This was reviewed by the Grand River Conservation Authority. And as mentioned, they have no objections to this development proposal. There are mitigation measures that are recommended in the environmental impact study, and we've included that as a condition of, in the recommended conditions of draft approval, to make sure that those are implemented. There is a park block, as I mentioned, that's also been included. This has actually been proposed right adjacent to the CP rail trail. So maybe some opportunities there to tie the park lands with the rail trail as well. There are concerns about traffic impacts from the proposed development. And a traffic impact study was completed. And this was reviewed by both the township and, in fact, County Transportation Services as well. And they have no objections to the proposed development from a traffic impact perspective. In terms of agency comments, we've received comments from historic Saugie-Meete and Saugie-Nijibwe Nation. They have no objection or opposition to the proposed development. Cana Post requires that the, it'll be serviced via central community mailbox, and we've included conditions with respect to that. Grand River Conservation Authority, as I mentioned, has no objection. They recommended some conditions of draft approval, which we've incorporated. Enbridge has no objections to proposed applications. They indicate that if easements are required to service development, that these need to be provided to Enbridge at no cost. And we've included some conditions with respect to utilities as well. In the township of Southgate, a staff report was presented to their council on September 18, 2019. That report recommended that council support the proposed subdivision and recommended some draft plan conditions. And we've included those conditions as recommended by Southgate. So it's county staff's opinion that the proposed plan of subdivision has regard for matters in the Planning Act. It's consistent with the provincial policy statement and conforms to the county official plan and township official plan. As such, staff are recommending that this plan subdivision be draft approved, subject to those conditions of draft approval we've included in the report. And we'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Randy. Are there any questions of council? Okay, seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor, any opposed? That's carried. Thank you very much, Randy. Okay, then we'll move backwards now to item 7E. The road entrance issue on Gray Road 1. Can I get a mover to put the item on the floor? Moved by Council McQueen, seconded by Council Gamble. You got in there this time.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. As you can see on the picture here, this is with regards to an entrance on Second Avenue. Basically, response to a delegation from Marsha Jones and Sue Doyle on October 24. Ms. Jones is here today. One thing I just wanted to say, kind of before I get started, is this wasn't a really easy decision for us. Her residence is the fourth one from the top. I think on page 51, you can see it with the address on it. Excuse me, it has a rear access, but it's not a stretch to say she has kind of the worst rear access in that block of rear accesses. So I can understand where she was coming from. It's, I've been down there a couple times to look at this. One time, we were there, and her neighbor to the west, kind of behind, was there with his truck and trailer. And when his truck and trailer is there, it is, it would be very difficult for her to get in there. In fact, I probably wouldn't do it with my vehicle. The other time, he wasn't there, and it was okay. So we kind of felt it was more a bylaw issue. But it's kind of one of those things that we thought, you know, permitting this one leads to more. So I'll kind of go through my PowerPoint presentation here and just show you what our reasoning was for denying it. Number one is just the fact that the alternative access exists. So as per our policy, if you have an alternative access, you kind of don't get the other one. The other policy that doesn't conform to is within 55 meters of an intersection. That one, we wave pretty frequently in urbans, as we've had a discussion today about Gray County road policies in urbans. That one's a tough sell. You know, it's hard to have no entrances within 55 meters of every intersection. It doesn't leave a lot of development space. So we're not as concerned about that one. It's just the alternative access that we kind of think about. So I guess there's the picture of the day I was there, when the truck wasn't there, and it's probably fairly accessible at that time. Our discussion with the City of Owensound indicated that they stopped doing snow removal on this about 25 years ago, even though it is an Owensound right-of-way. So I'm sure that is very inconvenient for the residents as well. There's not a lot of room back there. They're paying for snow removal. That being said, everyone does shovel their own driveways, so you can kind of justify it that way, I guess. But the thing we thought was if we allow this entrance, which is, you know, kind of the fourth from the top, then it's hard for us not to allow the third one, and the second one, and the first one. And the reason why, you say, "Well, what do you care? There's just a couple more entrances. What's the big deal?" I'm going to go out and go through what, this is kind of our, it probably won't have the parking, but at some point, Second Avenue is going to, you know, Gray Road 1 is going to be rehabbed. It's a pretty tight right-of-way. It's in our development charges. We've been collecting money to someday maybe upgrade it. At the very least, we'd probably like to do paved shoulders or bike lanes for the active transportation. So every driveway that is in front of a residence just creates a future problem for us, in that we have to do something for that person if we take their driveway away. Because most of them, a lot of those houses along there, the property line is basically the front of the house. So they're kind of, we're kind of giving them permission to park in the right-of-way, in a driveway. It just creates more people you have to fight with in the future. So we just thought if, all of a sudden, we have four more entrances or five, it's just someone to fight with in the future, who doesn't want their driveway removed? Because once you get it, you kind of don't want to give it back. But the only other thing is, a lot of the entrances along there have, a lot of them have entrances, but some of them are at the side of the house. Some of them end up kind of going past the side of the house to the back. So this is, there's not that many with it right in front with no other choice. Mr. Doyle had mentioned how traffic flow won't be affected. We think for sure it will be affected, because you're going to be either backing into the entrance, which is not real easy, or backing out of the entrance. So it will be affected. I mean, it will be obviously on the residents to make a safe traffic movement. But at some point, you know, with the road being that busy, you're kind of going to zip out and try to get out and back out of there and get out of the place before another car comes. Sometimes you kind of push it a bit, you know, he's kind of got to slow down. Just as a side note, I was recently dropping my daughter off at a house kind of just down from here with a similar condition. And it took me a long time to back out of there. Like, it is a busy road, and at night, it was raining. It is very tricky to see. So for us, it also represents a liability. There's a place you're backing out of that isn't the greatest. It's a busy road. You can't see that well. It's just one more chance that there could be an accident that we end up making a claim on, or being assessed a claim on. So there's kind of my picture of the, you know, the new entrance. You're going to have, you're going to be, have a snowbank there, maybe. That's just, you know, some random picture. But that's just one more reason why we're just a little leery on allowing an entrance there. And we just have noticed in the past, like I have, solving one person's inconvenience may create greater inconvenience for others in the future. This happens with us quite frequently in the past, where certain things have been allowed for one person's specific condition. And then later, it turns into something totally different, and we're kind of on the hook. Like, sometimes somebody builds a shop. They say, "Oh, you know, I just got a shop. All I'm doing is storing my boat in there. I just need my extra entrance, and I, it's going to be no inconvenience. I go in and out twice a year." And then the next thing you know, the person sells the residence, and it's a shop that sells something. And there's people pulling in and out all the time. In this case, you know, they have two pseudo-parking spaces at the back. All of a sudden, they get a third one at the front. Does it become a triplex with three entrances that you can't take one away? I don't know. Like, that's just, that's why we tend to like to stick with our policies if we can. And I guess that's our reasoning. Like I said, if there is one residence in this block that probably has a case for having a front one, it's probably that one. But we still feel like we should stick with our policy.
Counsel Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Well, some of those reasons that Pat's giving almost make you want to tell some of these people to, or maybe take their laneways away. But I think this is a unique situation. The access that she does have in the back, there's hardly any room as it is. There's nowhere to put the snow. I think in this particular case, I would move that we grant the exemption. The city just finished doing upgrades on Second Avenue. We did a lot of underground work. And the county repaved Second Avenue West this past summer. Maybe a year ago, but it's brand-new asphalt. Like, if this was ever going to be widened, it's going to be, it's going to be a long time. Thanks.
Thank you. Counsel Desai.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. One of the things Director Hoyd mentioned was this could possibly be a bylaw issue. My question was, what is the average wait time for someone who's made a bylaw complaint in Owensound? And I'm not looking for an answer right away. But that should be one of our considerations as well. I mean, we can't expect someone to, you know, not have access to the driveway for 30 minutes on their way back from a long day at work. The second question is with regards to the winter maintenance that the city has stopped in that entrance, or the right-of-way there. Do we know why they've stopped it? And maybe, is this something that the proponent needs to take up with the city and have them resume winter maintenance on this right-of-way?
I don't know who is going to answer that, but it's there.
For consideration for counsel.
Counsel Burley. You're seconding the motion that it be approved?
Yes.
Yeah, so I would think if you defeat this motion, would it not then invite a new motion, potentially?
We asked that question before.
Yeah, I'm.
We can do either.
I'm hearing that we can do either. But I'm going to suggest that if you're in favor of the proponent being given, then you defeat this, and then we bring a motion afterwards if it's defeated. Obviously, if it's, if the motion as it sits right now is carried, then... Does that make sense?
No, it does not.
I appreciate that you don't like it, but I'm going to suggest that we proceed that way. We have a motion before us to not approve. We'll vote on that, and then we'll see where things go. Counselor Mackey. Okay. Oh, my apologies.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. I guess it's a question, I don't know the history, but to me, this is downtown Owensound. And if this was one road over, you know, I think the city would probably be allowing an entrance. I mean, I don't want to speak for the city, but a lot of the, a lot of the streets in Owensound have a lot of entrances. And this is downtown Owensound also. So in my mind, even though it's a county road, it's still in the heart of the city. And typically, there's lots of entrances there. So I mean, I certainly support the entrance being granted.
Counsel Bondi.
Thank you, Warden Hicks. I, just two things. First of all, the last time this came up, I left the room declaring a potential conflict. The presenter, Stuart, is my landlord at work. But after meeting with the integrity people a couple weeks ago and sort of talking about, there isn't any pecuniary interest for me or for him. This, you used to have a factory across the street. It's an industrial neighborhood. Like a lot of the houses in, around the downtown, they weren't always designed to have a laneway or to have cars. Usually, the laneway at the back would have been just to provide coal to the back entrance to go into the basement. It's, I don't think there's any place in Owensound that the city would be maintaining a right-of-way on private property for anyone else. That's pretty consistent. I'd be surprised if any of us are. Up and down the street, north a block, block and a half or south about a block, there's a lot of houses that are really close to the road. They're similar. There's flat tops. There's townhouses. And most of them, if not all of them, do have parking in front going onto the street. So this isn't really changing the flavor a whole lot of the neighborhood. It's perhaps one more. I think I counted 13 or 14 in a kind of a two-block span there. So it's not really moving the needle very far. And again, I think I've done the real estate deal for the house that was behind it, and we were dealing with the right-of-way at that time, and all the people that were trying to get into it, none of it. And if somebody parks there, then you're going to have a difficult time getting in. So that one being the most southerly in that back lane, probably I would support the next motion, but not this one.
Counsel Mill.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Would this be a lot easier if this was a City of Owensound street?
No, 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 no.
Just asking for a friend.
Okay, sounds like we're ready to vote. So just to be clear, if you are in favor of granting the entrance to the proponent, you would defeat this motion, okay? So I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion as it sits right now? Are there any opposed? It's opposed. Okay, I'll entertain then any new motion someone might want to bring. Counsel Leary moves. And Counsel Burley seconds that we grant the proponent the entrance that they have requested. Discussion, Counsel McQueen.
1188 Second Avenue West is, could you bring the aerial shot up? Is that possible? Right there. I don't know if you can blow it up a little bit. So on my, on my, our, what we have in the computer here, the one, two, three, fourth one down is, it says 1188 Second Avenue West. That's the one we're talking about, right? Okay, so the one next to it has an entrance. Am I correct? So has there been any problem with that one? I guess that's just that you're aware of. Through you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, not that I'm aware of. We, I think it was, I'm assuming it was granted because they don't really have access to that laneway, is my thinking.
Okay, sounds like we're ready to call the vote. All those in favor of the motion? Are there any opposed? That is carried. Season's greetings, right? Okay, we are dealing with item 7G, the recreational trails' master plan. Sarah, you're dealing with this. Thank you. I'm looking for a mover to put the item on the floor. Moved by Counsel Carlton, seconded by Counsel Desai. And Sarah, you have the floor.
Okay, there we go. I didn't send the right slide, so I had to send out, do that quick update. Where's the? Oh, gosh, sorry. How do I turn it just on? There we go.
Yeah, view.
View, okay, sorry.
There it goes home, maybe.
What is it? Isn't it like F? Oh, the file? Okay, well, we'll just work with what we've got and do what we can here. Oh, that's not even the presentation now. Did we, what happened here?
Terror's coming.
No, what just happened? That's okay. Thank you. Thank you for your patience. So the recreational trails' master plan. So I'm just going to go, I'm going to do a brief overview of kind of how we ended up where we are and where we are now. So basically, I wanted to start, the project was initiated in late 2016 after we had an increasing number of requests coming from various groups to do various recreational activities on county properties. And that included both on the CP rail trail, as well as the county forest properties. With the increasing number that kept being brought forward, staff were directed by council to complete a comprehensive plan that would address all of these requests in a consistent manner. The RTMP, or the recreational trails' master plan, would allow staff to have the ability to have a council-approved document that would clearly direct them to a more efficient answer in a less, in result in less time to process any requests that came in. It would reduce the number of reports to council, and it would maintain a consistent approach in the decision-making. The document would address the requests while considering the other uses that occur in the area, in the areas, including forest management, as we know that forest management and recreational uses can exist together. It was also intended to provide direction for maintenance, signage, and future recreational development on these properties, including things like trail creations, amenities, those sorts of things. So what else happens in the county forest and on the CP rail trail? Although the focus of the recreational trail master plan was recreation, we couldn't ignore the fact that there were other activities that were found within the forest and on the CP rail trail. County forests are, sorry, I just lost my spot. Forest management, as I mentioned, occurs annually in our forests. We have a forest master, forest management plan, and that directs the management that should occur on the properties. So within a given year, we have about three properties under management in the winter months generally. The CP rail trail is also used as a corridor for utilities or farm accesses in addition to the trail use that it has. So what were we aiming for? In the beginning, there was a lot of discussion as to what would be the content of the document, including listing the potential uses for each forest properties, amenities that would be available, and if any public lands were adjacent to potential new uses and improvements, sign locations, sign design, those sorts of things. Some of these ideas were revisited throughout the process when we were drafting the document, and some were addressed differently than we had originally anticipated. One of those changes was the going-through of each forest property and listing all the possible uses that we could come up with. Instead of this approach, because we determined, even going through this process, that there was a lot of uses that we were unaware of that occur, that could occur on these properties, we came up with three fundamental tests that would evaluate the suitability of any forest property or the CP rail trail when a proposed use request came forward. So should those three tests be met, then there was two other criteria that would need to be met in order to move forward. If the three tests couldn't be met, then we wouldn't move forward. So what are the tests? So the three tests are, is it consistent with the long-term preservation of the forest and the land? Is the new use compatible with the existing uses and infrastructure in the area where it is proposed? And is enforcement an issue? And does the county have the resources to provide adequate enforcement for the protection of the trail or the forest if the new use is allowed? If any of the, as I mentioned, if any of the three tests can't be met, then, or can't be met, then we wouldn't move forward. If we were to move forward, the next two steps would be, are there any agreements or permissions that need to be put into place? permissions that need to be put into place? For example, cost sharing for the construction, liability, restrictions to when people or the use can be on that property? And then, you know, do we need a Nigros cartment permit? Do we need a local application or a road crossing agreement? Those sorts of things. Another thing that previously existed but was not emphasized was trail etiquette. It was buried on the website under each known use. What we've done, we've consolidated the list into one, and instead of breaking it down by the individual use, we made one big comprehensive list. And this was done because, for the same reason as we introduced the tests. We, we knew that there was going to be those situations where new uses were going to be proposed that we couldn't possibly contemplate at the time of the drafting of the plan. And we wanted to keep the directive very clear. We also wanted it to be included so that it was a starting point when we had these requests, and in that if a point of etiquette couldn't be made or met, in all likelihood it may not be able to meet one of the fundamental tests. It's not intended that the etiquette is to be a legislative bylaw regulation, but as a guideline to, on how to behave on the county properties and coexist with the other recreational uses. In addition to trail etiquette, other highlights under the recommendations are to establish trail design considerations, work on trails promotion, enforcement, and trail safety. So what are the shape of our existing forests? Currently, depending on where you are in the county and on what property you are, you can have a very different condition. Each property is, is very different from the next. Many forests don't have established trails, but some have rudimentary roads, those roads being used for harvesting or management purposes generally. Some have trails that are historical, and some have new and improved trails with amenities like signage and benches and those sorts of things. The CP rail trail is stone-dusted to about Holland Center and the remain, from Own Sound to Holland Center. The remainder from Holland Center to Dundalk was graded in 2018 in its entirety. There are areas along the CP rail trail that have significant ditching, and then others that are, it's very flat on either side. So depending on where you are in the county, it will determine the geography and how the layout is of each of those properties. Technically, all the forest properties allow for hiking, fishing, and trapping, but not are general, not are all suitable for these uses, in that they don't have the appropriate, either the appropriate access, signage, trails, et cetera, or there isn't clear delineation with property boundaries and those sorts of things. We do have gates and fences in some of our forests, and some of our forests also show signs of overharvesting and damage from invasive species, as well as some include species at risk. The CP rail trail also has some evidence of invasive species as well. All of those things we considered as part of the plan, and we are hoping to maintain and address to the best of our ability these assets so that they are available in the long term for public use. As I mentioned, we do have a forest management plan that is in the works right now, being updated, and it is going to address a lot of the areas, including overharvesting, and make a more sustainable plan for managing each of the properties. So as you can imagine, this wasn't an easy task. The, satisfying all the users was a significant challenge, as well as maintaining the other aspects of each of these properties. So with all the proposed uses that go on in each of the individual property, as well as the role that each property has in our local ecosystem, that balance was very challenging. The draft contains an approach which would be those fundamental tests that staff are hopeful can adequately address each user and each use while minimizing conflict on each of the properties. So to date, just so that council is aware, we have done some significant consultation on this project. When the project started in 2017, we had individual stakeholder meetings. We held a day workshop where anybody could sign up and come in, and we met with them and spoke about concerns and, and what they were using the trails for and those sorts of things. And then also in 2017, in November, we had a public open house and a workshop. And then earlier in the, well, in the summer of this year, we had another open house, as well as throughout the entire process, we have been communicating with lots of our user groups and the public when those emails and phone calls and conversations would come into play. So staff are confident that we have addressed the needs of the user groups, as well as maintaining and protecting the integrity of the trails. The plan provides a clear direction for staff to deal with new requests in a timely manner, and staff are recommending the approval of the recreational trails master plan and direction to implement the recommendations and action items that are identified in the plan.
Thank you very much. Harder questions? Counselor? Counselor Mill?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you, Sarah, for your presentation. As you and I have talked before, I was approached by a member of the community that uses the trails extensively, and there was a concern about the width of the gates prohibiting the use of side-by-sides, so to speak. I'm just wondering, did you give that any further consideration?
Although it wasn't explicitly written in the plan, we did speak with the ATV club about the width of the gates, and what we discussed was, because another concern that they had was the allowance of side-by-sides on the trail. So we spoke with our staff, and we came up with, we could go to a maximum width that would protect our asset and not allow larger vehicles on the trail. And we would also allow any ATV side-by-side on, on that, the trail that could meet that criteria. And that was kind of the balance that we, we found for them.
Counselor Mackey?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Thanks, Sarah. I remember back in sixteen, there was discussion in regards to the, the width of the trail and the safety aspect for side-by-sides. So is that, you know, were we able to be satisfied that the trail, rail trail that is, is wide enough for side-by-sides to meet? I remember that was some pushback from county staff. There was concern that the trail wasn't wide enough for two side-by-sides to meet.
With the restriction of the width through the gates, so I think we set up to fifty-four inches, with that reduction, that would be the maximum size of vehicle on the trail. We think that that would obviously minimize the impact, because at the time, they were asking for carte blanche with regards to width. And as we have seen even since 2016, the widths are upwards of, close to seventy inches at this, like, on some of the larger scale machines. And so by restricting that width, we have been able to address that concern, I think.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I'm not familiar with, you know, how, what's the width of an average side-by-side. I just know that a lot of, you know, seniors are starting to use side-by-sides, you know, on our, you know, wanna be able to use them on our trails. They're certainly typically not going nearly as fast as what the normal four-wheeler would go, so I'm just, I was hoping that maybe our new rules would accommodate, you know, couples wanting to go out and enjoy our trail that maybe have, you know, mobility issues, so.
We are, I don't, we are proposing that side-by-sides would be permitted as long as they're at a certain width.
I see no, oh, sorry, Counselor Suever.
Yes, thank you for this report. And being first-term counselor, I've not been around for a lot of the discussions that were held previously. One thing I'm wondering about is, how much data do we have on actual usage of these trails? Do we do trail counts? And the other thing we're experiencing in the town of Blue Mountains is we are getting a lot more usage, which brings about parking issues and, and obviously sanitation issues as well, that people show up and after a long drive from the city and the sanitation facilities are not there. So those are kind of two issues that I like to highlight, because, you know, certainly we are seeing a lot more use, and those, those seem to be issues that I didn't see really addressed too much in the report.
Sarah, I'm not sure if you talked about it specifically as part of this study, but I will say that it's something that's been brought to the Tourism Advisory Committee table. I think when we talk about sustainability of the tourism asset, one of the things that we need to pay attention to is, where are those assets that are attracting a lot of use? And are we making the necessary investments to ensure that they're being protected and that the amenities are there that people need, whether that's a garbage can or a porta body or, or what it is, so that we can kind of stay on top of that?
We also have agreements with user groups, and the ATV club in particular, in a couple of locations, I know one specifically in Markdale, they have a parking lot that they have an agreement with Chapman's to use, and they also put an out, an outhouse there, and there's also a garbage can there. Our agreements with the clubs are, if there are ongoing maintenance issues or concerns like that, that they bring them to our attention, and we will work with them. That's one of the directives of the recommendations, is where we see a need, we want to address that concern based on impacts from increased usage.
Go ahead, Randy.
Just further to Counselor Suever's question about tracking of, of usage, we, through this cycling and trail master plan grant that we got through MTO, we actually were able to acquire some trail counters for that. So we are in the early stages of collecting some of that information. We wanna try to obviously track that over time in terms of the usage, especially when we start getting into some of the recommendations and action items, like Sarah highlighted, like promoting these assets and be able to provide some of those facilities, like Kim indicated, in terms of improved maybe parking facilities, garbage, whatever it might be. Once we start promoting these, we really wanna start a good, good baseline for some of those before we start doing some of those improvements, just to see what the return on investment is, so to speak, in terms of some of those improvements going forward. We do have some other data that we can tap into, like Strava. We know that, for, for example, CP rail trail, of course, the portions around some of the settlement areas like Own Sound and Markdale and other areas, definitely some higher usage around those, those components. And, and so that's where it'd be important to work with local municipalities to ensure that some of those important trail linkages from a community perspective are, are enhanced going forward as well.
Thank you very much for your presentation. We'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion? Any opposed? That is carried. Thank you. Okay, the only with item seven H now, and the renewal of the Gray-Solville Conservation Authority contract. Randy's on deck. I'm looking for a mover to put the item on the floor. Counselor Keveney, seconded by Counselor Patterson. Randy?
Thank you very much. So back in 2005, that was fourteen years ago, it's hard to believe, the county entered into a contract agreement with Gray-Solville Conservation Authority to manage our, our county forests and trails. That's a bit of a forest and trail theme today. And the trails within the county forests, as, as well as to enforce our county's forest management bylaw, in terms of those services. In 2007, Gray-Solville also took on the day-to-day management of the CP rail trail relating to risk management and general maintenance. The relationship that we've had with the Conservation Authority has been very successful and very beneficial. They have a lot of knowledge, of course, with the properties that they manage and maintain, and, and we're able to tap into, to that, that knowledge base. We have current agreements with, with Gray-Solville to, to provide those services. Those agreements are set to expire the end of this year. And we've prepared some revised draft agreements that have been included as part of this report, and we've prepared those in consultation with our legal and agreement staff, as well as with Gray-Solville Conservation Authority. We are still putting some of the final touches on those agreements, so there may be some minor revisions to the agreement prior to us bringing forward to council, if, if committee the whole, of course, accepts it today. So I just wanted to flag that there may be some revisions, and we can highlight those revisions if there are any for council on December 12th. The, the Gray-Solville Board has authorized Gray-Solville staff to enter into an agreement with the county to continue to provide these services, so there's support from the Gray-Solville Board to continue with this relationship. So at this stage, it's recommended the county renew the contract with Gray-Solville in accordance with these draft revised agreements, as attached to the report. The contract renewal will be for a period for five years, to December 31st, 2024. The previous agreements were for a five-year basis as well. With, we've included some language in there with the option to renew after that date as well. And then, of course, provisions in there in terms of cancellation clauses with one, one-year notice and things like that. Happy to take any questions that council may have with respect to this.
Thank you, Randy. Questions, anyone? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Thank you very much, Randy. Okay, I'm now looking for us to, to have a motion for us to go into a closed meeting to deal with litigation or potential litigation and advice that's subject to solicitor and client privilege. Could I have a mover? Counselor Burley, seconded by Counselor Desai. All those in favor? That's carried. Kim, can you tell us who needs to be here?
I can go back here, are you good to go Rob?
Yeah.
So confirmed, we're back in open session and that in closed session, we discussed only the items on the closed meeting agenda, nothing else. Okay, item number nine, Roma delegation request, Kim.
Thank you, your worship. The delegation requests that I can bring forward to council for consideration and then you may have others to add to this list. First is a delegation with colleges and universities. This would be a delegation in, a joint one with the county of Bruce and it would be in support of the nursing program at Georgian College and other associated health sector training and development from Georgian College. The second one is with the Ministry of Health with regard to continued funding for community paramedicine. As you heard today, we have confirmed funding till March 31st. The LIN has, you know, said that they intend to support this as they can and I think we just need to keep up the pressure on that particular one. And then the third delegation Savannah and I have talked and think there's some merit in having a delegation with economic development, job creation and trade, just to bring the ministry up to speed on the good work that's happening in Sidneyham and as an example of what a rural community can do as far as supporting innovation skills training and entrepreneurship, you never know who's watching. So, those are the three that I have. The college is also, Georgian is also very interested in, in supporting anything to do with further broadband infrastructure or SWIFT. I, I will mention that right now, the federal government has another initiative asking people to comment to them about their own experience with broadband. If you went to measuringbroadbandcanada.com, they're asking to have speed tests done at your home or you're at your place of business. So I think they want their own data to see where the shortfalls are, so that's just a sideline. I don't think we need an infrastructure delegation on SWIFT because that's being taken care of through Western Wardens and the, and the SWIFT group as, as.
Oh, Western Wardens?
Yeah.
I've been told that.
Oh, that's right.
Been told that any new requests really should come from the Western Wardens rather than from SWIFT directly.
Yeah.
Okay, any other ideas on delegations for Roma? Are you satisfied with the list? Counselor Swerber?
Yes.
Oh, my apologies.
There you go. So, I think it would be good to talk to the Ministry of Transportation about a regional transportation strategy for here. We have the Highway 26 corridor which is severely overloaded and there's no actual good data on recent, like they keep referring to 2016 data and anybody who's driven Highway 26 in 2016 and today knows that the situation is very different. Also, I understand the same problems occur on the Highway 6 and 10 corridor where it passes through places like Chatsworth. We do need some, some attention paid to the transportation here because it's quickly reaching a point where it's, it's hampering economic development. Back, an old planner brought me a document from 1972 when it talked about Ontario's transportation needs. It said we need a four lane highway going up to North Bay, we need one going to Sudbury up the side of Georgian Bay. Those are essentially complete, there's a little bit of work left to do on 69. Then it said we need a four lane highway from Hamilton to Owen Sound and we need a four lane highway from Barry to Owen Sound east-west. Highway 10 is four lane now, at least to Shelburne, pretty much and, but further up, as the development is, is going on here, we're soon going to reach a point where, you know, we can't get the vehicles through our communities and there's been no work done at all on NEA yet. There's some minor work done on possible miniature bypasses along Highway 26. I don't know what's been done on the 6 and 10 corridor, but certainly there is no regional transportation strategy and part of that is due to, I think, the county structure and the, the structure we have. Collingwood just put out a new transportation plan which included a plan to four lane mountain road to our boundary and also to four or five lane Highway 26 to our boundary and, and then what? You know, what does that traffic do when it gets there? So there needs to be, I don't know whether province needs to step in and, 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 you know, get the counties to sit down on an integrated transportation plan. So, there is a plan that, you know, because the traffic that gets here has to go through every county south of here and so we can't do things in isolation because, you know, it's not going to work. So, some of these other main roads have been built and, and they work quite well and it's really helping the economy, I know in North Bay is Highway 11 gets stuff from southern Ontario there and back very quickly, so businesses can now build there. But if you, if it takes you longer to get goods from Owen Sound to Toronto than it does from North Bay and Sudbury to Toronto, which is soon becoming the case, then we're going to be at a severe disadvantage.
Thank you, Counselor Swerber. So I'm gonna, there's a motion being drafted as you see here now, I'm going to suggest, Tara, that you add the word integrated next to that regional transportation strategy. That is a word that you use Counselor Swerber. Are there any other suggestions? If not, I'm going to call for a motion, somebody to make a motion that we approve, the list as outlined by Kim and Counselor Swerber's suggestion as well. Counselor O'Leary moves, seconded by Counselor Kentner. We ready to call the question? All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That is Carrie, thank you very much. Item number 10, are there any notices of motion? Counselor Kentner.
If I, if I could, I'll provide a, a motion to grant County Council alternative, alternance of access to the county portal. The order has to be to that, there's a second for that motion.
Wait, it's a notice of motion, so perhaps when you bring the motion, you'll actually ask for a second at that time. I saw another hand. Counselor McQueen.
I was sort of on your other business before you got away into notice of motion.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, is there, well, let's deal with the notices of motion and maybe we'll come back to your, your other business. Is there any other notices of business? Notices, it's maybe getting late, notices of motion. Okay, Counselor McQueen.
There we are. Well, thank you, Mr. Warden and County Council, I'd just like to introduce myself to County Council that I will be running for Warden at our inaugural session next week and I do have a mover and a seconders, so I just wanted to make that public announcement today.
Okay, are we done with the other business and notices of motion? Looks like we are and we'll deal with item number 11, which is the Warden's closing address. That's me, right?
It's you.
Brace yourself, I'll be about 45 minutes. So County Council, staff, visitors and members of the media, I think they're all gone now, are they?
Yes.
It has been 359 days since my inauguration. I thank you for this opportunity to reflect a little and having reviewed the closing speeches of a number of past Wardens, I thought I might take a slightly different approach. While I will take some time to reflect on our accomplishments over the last year, I will, it will not be the central theme of my speech today. I want to share some things about myself that you may not know. I never had the opportunity to meet my father. He was a white man with blond hair and blue eyes. He was also a soldier with the British Army where he served as a chef from his teens until the day that he died. My mother was a poor black woman from Guyana, South America, who struggled to raise six children by herself. My mother, an incredible matriarch with the strength and resilience of a palm tree in a tropical storm, wanted a better life for herself and for her children. To use the words of Don Cherry, she wanted the milk and honey of Canada. Leaving all of us behind in Guyana with friends and family, she came to Canada alone and worked as a domestic. She lived a simple life, saved her money and brought her kids to Canada, one or a few at a time, as her limited funds would allow. We lived in government housing at Jane and Drifwood, one of the toughest communities in Toronto. I grew up in poverty and have lived experience with being hungry. To put things in perspective, in high school, I weighed a whopping 67 pounds. Think about what you may have weighed when you were in high school or what the average student weighs in high school and then imagine a 67 pounder in the mix. Yes, I was and still am a short person, but I was also suffering from malnourishment. As if that wasn't enough, I had one extra challenge. I had and still have a profound disability. In short, I have difficulty with processing speed and memory. Kentner and Clumpus. Sorry, Carlton. My disability went undiagnosed until I was an adult. Now, why am I telling you all this? I tell you this because as I reflect over the last year, I'm truly humbled to think about just how far I've come. What happened to me is not what you would have expected. Who would have predicted that a scrawny, nappy-headed black kid from Jane Finch with no money and a learning disability would go on to earn a law degree and an MBA? Finch, with no money and a learning disability, would go on to earn a law degree and an MBA? He would then get elected and rise through the ranks to become the first visible minority person to serve as Warden of this great county. My example serves as proof that Canada is a place where everyone can dream their dream and reach their full potential. You will pardon me if I appear to be off course, but in this moment of reflection, I'm feeling a deep sense of gratitude. How lucky and privileged am I to be a Canadian? How lucky are all of us to live in this great country and call ourselves Canadian? While I'm off course, I might as well go completely off course. Yes, I'm going to go there and talk about God. The first line in our Charter of Rights and Freedom reads, and I quote, "Whereas, Canada is founded upon principles that recognize the supremacy of God and the rule of law." I would not describe myself as an extremely religious, as extremely religious, but I do have faith. I was raised Catholic, and a good number of my mentors were priests, nuns, and brothers. Like many Catholics, I struggle with my faith. However, I do believe in a higher power that I choose to call God. I believe that my higher power has a plan for me, and that plan is not limited by my external circumstances. In my early years, I was very fortunate to have numerous mentors in my life. One of my mentors told me that great things happen to those people who dream with their eyes wide open. So, thank you for putting up with my digression, but I felt it important to illuminate, at least a little, my experiential and my philosophical underpinnings, and why serving as Warden over the last year has been so meaningful to me. Exactly one year ago, we were freshly elected council dominated by newbies. Think about it. Just prior to the election, there were five former Wardens seated around this horseshoe, all of them now gone. So, the last year for this council has been about orientation, renewal, and determining our path moving forward. The learning curve can be described as extremely steep. That being the case, I thought it prudent to get out and visit operations in all corners of the county. I want to thank the senior management team for embracing my request and taking time of the, time out of their busy schedules to show me around. I remember going with Kevin, our paramedic director, in a supervisor's pickup truck to the town of the Blue Mountains to meet the staff. While there, it was such a busy day that the Blue Mountain Resort, at the Blue Mountains Resort, that the supervisor's truck was put into service, and off I went to three different actual emergency calls. I got to see our skilled professionals in action providing medical response to citizens in distress. Then there was the day I was visiting one of our repair shops with Pat, our transportation director. The guys were so happy to have a Warden visiting their shop. You should know that they refer to this building as the White House. Anyways, they were so excited to show me their work, and it was evident that they found their work to be challenging and meaningful. One of our staff was so excited to show me a piece of machinery, which was a massive ditch digger, that on a blistering cold winter day, he went outside to the storage area, fired up the machine, and brought it in the shop so that I can get a good look. Then, there was a visit to the Ayton Yard, again, on a very stormy winter day, where I met the staff and had an opportunity to ride along between Ayton and Durham with one of our plow operators. His name was Mark. Now, this guy, outside of his truck, barely said a word. Once in the truck, though, he became very talkative. This very sophisticated, the very sophisticated cockpit of that truck, with all of its levers, switches, and joysticks, was this guy's domain, and where he felt comfortable and happy. What a privilege it was to meet him and spend an hour in his world. Then there was the day I visited the Front Store Social Services operation in Hanover with Barb, our Director of Social Services. While there, I observed our caring staff who knew everyone who walked into that door by name. I could go on with stories about my visits to our long-term care facilities, our social housing projects, et cetera, but we'd be here all day. In addition to my visit to county operations, as you all know, I toured each of the municipalities in Gray County with each mayor and CAO. This was a real education. I was afforded the opportunity to learn from those who know best what the unique challenges are in each municipality, as well as those challenges that are common throughout the county. The tours were in every instance very well organized, and I want to thank all of you and your CAOs for taking the time to organize my visits. Just a few of our accomplishments over the last year include the following. We completed Recolor Gray, a two-year project to create a new Gray County official plan. Our plan was formally approved by the province this year. The official plan will direct our growth and policy development over the next 20 years. We will also soon be implementing our recreational Trails Master Plan. You can tell when this speech was written, it was before today. We did, we addressed that today. Feedback from citizens will help us to determine how we want to enjoy our 8,400-plus acres of forest. In transportation services, we completed projects on Gray Road 4, 9, 13, and 40. We also completed two bridges, one in Holstein and the other in Hanover between Gray and Bruce Counties. We also installed new smart signals, the first of its kind in Gray, at the intersection of Gray Road 4 and 18 Avenue in Hanover. In housing, we set a bold target to reduce chronic homelessness by 50%. In response to a plea by farmers, we reduced the farm tax rate by 1%, down to 24% of the residential rate. Lastly, to address transportation challenges, we hired someone whose sole and dedicated function will be to help us develop a plan of action. While we have accomplished much in the last year and have much to be proud of, I am well aware that we are not in a state of Hakuna Matata, no worries in Gray County. In my view, our biggest challenge over the next year will be doing more with less. There are high expectations around issues like affordable housing, public transportation, workforce attraction, and addressing social challenges such as mental health and addictions. At the same time, our allotment from the province is shrinking, and the expectation is that it will continue on that trajectory. So, to close, and you'll be happy to hear me say that, here we are, one year in. The honeymoon period is over, and it's time to throw things into second gear. I have every confidence that working together, we are going to meet the challenges and do great things for the citizens of Gray County. The second last word goes to our staff. We have, and many of them are sitting here, we have an amazing group of people working for us in Gray County. Led by our CAO Kim and a talented senior management team, the quality of work produced is second to none. On behalf of the people of Gray County, thank you very much for your work. The last word goes out to you around this horseshoe, the members of County Council. Thank you for giving me this great opportunity to serve as your Warden for 2019. I truly hope that my performance has met or exceeded your expectations. Thank you.
Mr. Warden, if you'd come forward, I'd be pleased to present you with your Warden's pen for the year. Mr. Warden, on behalf of the council, it's been a interesting, challenging, there's a number of adjectives I can use, but it has been a very, as you noted, a very accomplished year. We've moved the business of the council forward, I believe, and